You know I get when you first go.
Are you still using the same old paragraph?
Good afternoon, everyone. This is the April 10th, 2025 meeting of the Town of Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals, pursuant to Governor Healey's March 28th, 2025 signing of Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 extending certain COVID measures adopted during the state of emergency, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law until June 30th, 2027. This meeting of the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals is conducted in person and via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings provided for on the order. A reminder that people that would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may call (508) 945-4410, conference ID 194301313, or join the meeting by the link in the Microsoft Teams link in the posted agenda. This is a live broadcast and simulcast. Chatham TV will provide it as soon as possible. If we don't have real-time access, we will post a meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. In accordance with town policy, the public can speak to any issue or business item on the agenda during the meeting when recognized by the chair. I'd ask that everybody shut off any gadgets that make any noise whatsoever, if you would, and procedural steps for the meeting is we start off with a roll call of all board members, and then we ask if there's anybody participating on the phone to make sure that you can identify yourself for us during what you're speaking. Our staff, sir, clock on my right, will read the hearing notice, then you, or your representative, can present your appeal, our application. Anyone in favor will be asked if they'd like to speak, and that would be for up to five minutes, and there'll be a clock on the board to keep you in line with that. And then we will read any, and all letters received by the board, and then anyone who wants to ask a question or would like to speak against the application will have also five minutes to do so. And if you have a letter and you want to speak, I'd ask you to choose, do you want to speak, or do you want us to read your letter? So please try to follow along with that. Then the applicant will have a chance to rebut anything in the letters or testimony. We will ask questions and then hear further information, and then when we close the public hearing, at that point, it's just the board deliberating. We won't be taking comments or questions from anybody else when we close the public hearing. We will deliberate, and usually we vote on the appeal. All votes are taken by roll call, and at the end of the meeting, we will close with a verbal confirmation and note the time of adjournment. So we're going to start with a roll call of all board members authorizing and approving this form of meeting, starting with David Veitch.
Yes, David H. Veitch, and I approve this form of meeting.
Ed Acton, I approve.
David S. Nixon, I approve.
Paul C. Semple, I approve.
Stephen D. DeBoeran, I approve.
Virginia Fenwick, I approve.
And Randy Pardash, I approve as well. Now, we have a one set of minutes, and before we actually approve them, there may be some comments. So Paul, can you move the minutes?
I will move the option of the minutes circulated from March 13, 2025.
Dave Veitch seconds and wishes to offer some corrections.
Please do.
So on, these are all sort of housekeeping-type corrections. On page three, near the top of the page, there are three bullet points that begin with Mr. Poino, P-O-I-N-O, and in those three, we want to change the P to a D. It's Mr. Doino.
Okay.
Okay. Then on page five, down in the lower third of the page, following the terminology, correspondence was read into the record, below that, we, the first bullet point, we would like to strike where it says Wetlands Permitting Coordinator and Substitute Board of Health, and then to strike the second bullet, second and third bullet points regarding correspondence received for this one.
Okay.
Then we, and then we get to page seven, where, near the top of the page, again, following correspondence was read into the record, the second bullet point and third bullet points should be followed, following the date November 19, 2024, in the first bullet point, adding the words "wrote in opposition," and under the last bullet, the third bullet point, following the date November 12, 2024, comma, also wrote in opposition.
Okay.
That's it.
Anybody else? Ginny, did you have a comment?
I wanted to point out that Mr. Doino misspelling minus, super minor compared to all of those names. On page two, Conservation Commission, the very bottom, it's the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet from the bottom, should be capital C, Conservation Commission.
Okay. Anybody else?
Also very minor, and I think Dave Veitch might have mentioned this, I didn't catch it, back on page five, under the correspondence was read, there's Robert and Andrea Dodd. The letter says it was November 11, 2025. I think it should be 2024. We haven't had November 11 yet.
Those were, actually, we were striking
Okay.
those lines and then moving them to another location.
Are we ready for a vote? As a measure.
And so, and Dave Veitch votes to adopt.
Okay.
Ed Acton approves.
Dave?
I approve.
Well?
All votes to approve.
Steve votes to approve.
Ginny votes to approve.
As do I. Okay. That was easy. Now, we're going to go to our first application, 24-140, Cynthia Waters, care of William F. Riley, 48 Seamus Lane. Sarah?
Application number 24-140, Cynthia Waters, care of William F. Riley Esquire, Peel Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 48 Seamus Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's map, 1A Block 20J, Lot X10. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling in a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 14.5 feet from the Southern Lea Butter. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming, and then it will be located 14.5 feet from the Southern Lea Butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage for the 10 dwellings is 9,102 square feet, 11.2 percent, and the proposed building coverage is 9,263 square feet, 11.4 percent, where 10 percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it has 10 dwellings where one dwelling is allowed. The lot contains 81,358 square feet in an R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5, be of the protective bylaw. This was continued from January 9th and March 27th, 2025.
Hello, welcome back, gentlemen. If you could tell us what's new on this one, that would be efficient.
Well, thank you very much. William Riley, on behalf of Cynthia Waters, who's present here today, excuse me. So, on the top page of the handout, I showed you the changes. So, the previous design, the cellar was 895 square feet. Now it's 859. First floor was reduced from 948 square feet, which was adding 150 square feet, to 912 square feet, which adds only 114 square feet. The second floor was previously 914 square feet, it's now 821 square feet. Top of the ridge was previously 59.65, now it's 57.75, so about a two-foot decrease. The building height from top of foundation is 28.85, now it's 26.6 feet. Building coverage goes from 965 square feet to 926 square feet.
Whoever's online, if you could mute. Yep.
Okay. The Southern Lea Butter setback previously was 14.5 feet. We're moving the building slightly north, so it's 16 feet. And then the ceiling height on the first floor was eight feet, two inches, and now it's seven feet, 11 inches. Those are the, those are the principal changes that we've made. The, I'm going to ask Chris to go through how he made the changes and, you know, what the goal of both he and Ms. Waters were in making them.
So, Chris Cannon, the architect, we are not moving the building north. In fact, we are shortening the building at one foot six, so that the northern portion stays exactly where it is. The south end moves one foot six, removing the nonconformity of six inches over the line. So, I thought that was a good place to start, because it provided me a reduction of quite a bit of square footage at each floor. So, so, you know, that was where I started. I dropped the driveway six inches. That was about the most I felt I could do it and still be able to drive cars back up to Seamus Lane, because there is a bit of a difference between the two. I dropped the basement level or cellar level a bit, so that I could then drop the first floor. I was able to shelf the foundation in a way that gets the first floor closer to the driveway grade. And then I dropped the roof by reorganizing the roof and the exterior of the house quite a bit. I actually somewhat redesigned the exterior while still keeping sort of character that I had originally had. I, you know, was able to remove on the south end the dormer that I had, bring the roof lines.
That was a previous design.
That was a previous, yeah. And so I was able to bring the roof lines down to create the, the sort of view, and I use the term of one and a half story. I don't mean that by the way our bylaws intend for it to be. It's the impression of a one and a half-story house. So, I was able to bring the roof lines down, both on the front and the back, and create, instead of what looked like, perception of a three-story house on the back, I created dormers, so that it was a little more in line with what we think of as the back of a Cape home. So I created two dormers. You can see I broke them up, so it reduced square footage also, and gave, you know, more of a look of the one-story home. Again, it's not much I can do, you know, to the fact that we're built into the side of a hill, but by dropping it down even further, less of that, that portion of the building is seen. The other thing is I verified that this cellar is indeed below, it's more than 50 percent in the ground. It does not meet our bylaws criteria for being a story, so this is indeed a two-story house. So, on the sheet REG-2, you'll see all these changes that I made. I outlined them in there, and I think that pretty well tells it, and Bill covered those. So, happy to answer any, any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, so, at our last meeting, Mr. Nixon expressed a concern about how this house would fit into the neighborhood, and suggested that we model the entire neighborhood. And the, we investigated that, and the cost candidly was kind of out of sight. So, what we did was we took a lot of pictures. So what I'd like to do, to show Mr. Nixon what the neighborhood itself looks like, is can we show Andrew's drone footage? Now, is this, is this Andrew's stuff, or, okay, all right. So, can I stop you there for just a minute? So what Chris did was he put up two-by-fours on either end of the gable, and then ran a string between them. It's difficult to see, but there are little pink ties on the, on the lines, so that's the height of the proposed ridge. Okay, go ahead, Sarah. So these are the other homes in the neighborhood, so you see how our design fits in. So I think, you know, it's kind of an eclectic collection of designs, and I think that, you know, Chris's design is compatible with those designs. And then, the third page on my handout, we compare the gross floor areas. And so at our last meeting, David pointed out, pardon me, Mr. Nixon, pointed out that our house was the largest house in the neighborhood. So under our current proposal, the gross floor area is 2592. Again, we're adding over 800 square feet of gross floor area, because we have a basement, and previously we did not. But as you can see, there are three homes that have larger gross floor areas than we do. Of course, there are others like 18, which has never been modified, and I don't think 42 has been modified either. But anyway, so, but I think that our design is compatible in size with the neighborhood. And then the, what I'd like to do is go to picture three. One of the things we talked about a lot last time was the impact on the view. Is that picture three?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, so this is the view from the deck on the Marino House. We weren't there. The drone was there. And so, you can see, so, you can see the two-by-four sticking up from the roof. So the south end of the house is being shortened by a foot and a half. So, the view from the Marino deck remains largely unchanged, because the view over the roof is basically other houses in Harwich, and really distant views. And I should comment that, prior to the first meeting, Mr. Marino and Ms. Waters had a conversation about removing some trees, and the, so Cindy contacted the neighbor, and these, because the trees weren't on the condominium property, they were on the neighbor's property, and removed four trees. You can see the stumps there. And after she did that, she was told, well, you know, that still wasn't sufficient, and that's, that's why the Marinos were here to object to our last design. So, there was also conversation about whether other homes in the neighborhood were impacted by the change in the ridge height. So, if you want to go back to the, you have to go, I think, all the way back to the beginning of Andrew's stuff. All right, so, see the, yeah, the picture three that I referenced is the one that was taken from the, by the drone from the deck of the Marino House. All right, so, anyway, so that's basically the view the Marinos have today. And, as I say, the house is moving a foot and a half. I mean, a foot and a half's been cut off the house, but when you look at the view above the house, you know, there's not that much. So go to the next picture. Okay, so one of the things we talked about at the last meeting was whether there are other homes in the neighborhood whose views were going to be impacted. And so, this is a two-story house behind the Marinos' houses. So the Marinos have the cottage here on the left, and then they have another house on the right here, which you can just see the edge of. And so this is the two-story house behind it, that it was suggested the views would be impacted by the increase in our ridge height. And, as you can see, the view is mostly blocked by the trees that already exist on a Marino property. There is a tiny little bit of the view that would still be visible, but the main view, the majestic view of Nantucket Sound, remains. All right, next picture. That's almost, right, so this is from the south end of that same house. As you can see, they have a little deck there, and so the view from that deck must be out towards Nantucket Sound, because clearly you can't see anything from that little deck on the second floor out over our house. Next picture. So this is a drone picture from behind the Marino House, and so the, in this picture, the bottom part of the, of the view would be blocked by the roof, but the main view, the overall view of Nantucket Sound is not blocked. Next picture. All right, so, so the house, on the right-hand side here is the Marinos' second home. So Cindy Waters asked the drone photographer to take a picture from the house up at the corner of Seamus and Long Lane, and obviously, there's no view over our property. Next picture. from behind the Marino House. And so the, in this picture, the bottom part of the view would be blocked by the roof. But the main view, the overall view of Nantucket Sound, is not blocked. Next picture. All right, so the house, on the right-hand side here, is the Merinos' second home. So Cindy Waters asked the drone photographer to take a picture from the house up at the corner of Semest and Long Lane. And obviously, there's no view over our property. Next picture. That's, that's 46. That's 46. That's Cindy Waters' house with the, so I don't know. This picture must be from the house behind that.
We probably have the gist of this, Mr. Riley.
Okay.
Okay?
Right, so the...
And we heard all the criteria last time, so...
Well, I just wanted to point out
Yeah, sure.
That, you know, we're only adding, so in terms of number one, adequacy, we're only adding 100 square feet to the billing coverage. Compatibility to the size. There are now three buildings in our condominium unit that are larger than our unit. So we believe we're compatible. We've reduced the nonconforming nature so that the billing coverage of the entire condominium is going up two-tenths of a percent. But, you know, because we removed the nonconformity in the south end of our house by cutting it off by a foot and a half, we removed that nonconformity. And number four, I forgot to mention last time that we are adding a drain in our driveway to help control stormwater runoff. Again, number five, we believe that with the changes Chris has made, that, you know, the, other than the views and vistas from the Marino House, which I think remain essentially unchanged because they're on the south side of our house, that other than that, we're not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And to everything else, pretty much the same.
All right, well, yeah, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Cannon. So is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wish to speak in favor of this application? Please raise your hand if you want to speak in favor. Seeing none, I will read the one correspondence that we received on March 5, 2025, from Sarah and Ronald Marino. Regarding ZBA application 24-140, we respectfully request that a digital copy of the applicant's 3D model be transmitted to or be accessible by our surveyor in a reasonable amount of time to review and provide comment on the model. Our intention is to ensure an adequate standard of care has been applied to the 3D model and to verify the work product is a true and accurate representation of the proposed work. I further request that the applicant be required to contact East-Southeast by telephone, and they give the telephone to ensure the best method to view the 3D model. A copy of this correspondence is being sent to the applicant's representative, William F. O'Reilly, via email and certified mail. That concludes the correspondence. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application? If so, please raise your hand. Yes, sir. If you could, both of you want to speak? Okay, so one at a time, if you want to go up to the podium. You know the drill. The podium's over there. State your name when you get there. Speak into the mic, and you have five minutes. We do that for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Ross Marino. I have two houses, one at 37 and one at 49 Semest Lane. Now, I'd like to begin briefly by referencing a case that was mentioned at the last meeting we had, Kenner v. Chatham zoning board. I understand that many of you are familiar with the decision, so I'll summarize the material facts briefly to prove that, and to prove that the material facts are not only relevant to today's proposal and explain why the potential injury to my property is far more substantial than what was the issue in Kenner. So in that case, the Kenners objected to a proposed structure located approximately 120 feet away from their home. The proposed home sat within the existing footprint, and the change involved a seven-foot height increase in the roof from an original 12-foot grade to its final 19 feet above grade. In contrast, the current application proposes a structure that would only sit 60 feet from our home, which is half the distance of Kenner, and nearly 29 feet from grade, which is approximately 50% taller than the structure in the issue at that case. This is not just a technical difference. It materially alters the scale and impact proposed in the building. As the Kenners, as the court in Kenner noted, the board must consider the views and vistas of the neighborhood and abutting properties when evaluating such proposals. While view obstruction alone is not legally significant to deny relief, this proposal implicates more than just a view. Our property was previously approved for an outside deck, which has been constructed in reliance on the openness and natural light currently available. This proposed structure would not, or would cast significant shade over the deck and the yard for most of the day, making it functionally unusable for its intended purpose. This is not a merely aesthetic complaint. It implicates the enjoyment and the use of our outdoor space, which was previously approved and relied upon, especially for a rental property. This house has been rented out by my family for over 60 years now, and the experiences it offers is quaint, peaceful, and coastal. It's a central value to the character of the neighborhood. Guests come to Chatham not only to feel hemmed in, by the, feel hemmed in by the dense vertical construction, but also enjoy the open skies and sea air. Eating outdoors, enjoying the yard, and viewing oceans are not luxuries. They are core to the property's identity and rental appeal. By contrast, if this application was granted, the porch would sit in near constant shade. The yard would struggle to support grass and flowers, altering the neighborhood's charm. The sense of openness would be replaced with a walled-in feel, more characteristic of a city than Chatham. I live here, or, excuse me, I live and I go to school in Boston. I know and I love the city. But Chatham is not Boston. It is a small fishing town with historic cottage culture. These changes threaten that spirit. The Town of Chatham's community vision statement emphasizes this very point. It states that "Chatham retains its village character," quote-unquote, "with its Cape Cod style, its distinct neighborhood concerns, its small intimate building scale, and its values, its spiritual perception, and to a certain extent, geological sense of isolation." Applicant 24-140, as proposed, is plainly inconsistent with these principles. In conclusion, the scale and height and proximity of the proposed structure is incompatible with the neighborhood character. It diminishes the usability and the charm of the rental property and contradicts both the precedent set in Kenner and the town's own planning and vision. I respectfully urge the board to deny this application.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next.
Ronald Marino, 3749 Semest Lane. Regarding the photos, 3D survey really would have been helpful, or even the photos, if we had an opportunity, we'd review them ahead of time. I think the perspective from which those photos were taken was quite creative at 50 feet above the highest point in the neighborhood. Clearly, you can see the ocean very well. Not sure that those were an accurate representation of what is exactly out there. My intention is to have looked through the zoning board rules and regulations and point out where I personally feel this application is in conflict with those regulations. The first thing that I found was that the application has a complete failure to meet the intentions of the bylaw. And the bylaw is to promote or maintain compatibility with neighboring properties. I don't feel that it does. Again, we hadn't seen the revised drawings until just now. I'm still not convinced that it does. There's a failure to avoid the creation of adverse impacts on neighboring properties. There's also a failure to reduce or minimize existing adverse impacts on neighboring properties. The property is already nonconforming land, and we're going to increase that. Under Section B, enlargement, extension, and change, the zoning enforcement officer will determine that the proposed project does not increase the nonconforming nature of such dwelling. For dwellings with setback nonconformities, any addition within the required setback area, including an increase in building height, shall be deemed to increase the nonconforming nature of the dwelling. So to say that we've done tremendously to reduce the nonconformity, you haven't. You may have done it on the south side, but you did it on, you added it back in tenfold on the top. I ask the board, if this project is approved as submitted, then why have a bylaw at all? Other pre-existing nonconforming structures may be extended, altered, or changed in use by special permit, which is what they're here for, provided that the Zoning Board of Appeals finds that such extension, alteration, or change will not substantially more, will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure use. The previous paragraph just showed that the application is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Of the 12 items that follow in Paragraph B that the board uses to evaluate the criteria of the application, "In making its decision, the Zoning Board of Appeals shall make written findings at a minimum of each." Of those additional 12 items, I feel that the application fails to meet the standard of the adequacy of the size of the site. It's the smallest piece of land around, over there, of what's left of that singular piece. And it's going to have one of the largest houses on it. The application fails to meet the standard of compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. The application fails to meet the standard of suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties, including slopes on both sides. The application fails to meet the standard of impact of scale, sitting, and mass on neighborhood visual characters, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. That's right from the town's own bylaw. Let's enforce it. That's what it's there for. The lot coverage is already over 10%. It's already nonconforming. The proposal wants to increase it more. I'll close by saying that upon reading the Town of Chatham's community vision statement, it's clear to me that this application, 24-140, is in stark contrast with that vision statement. The vision statement best summarizes why this application should be denied as submitted. There is great concern that Chatham not fall victim to development...
I just wanted to just let you know, just out of courtesy, you have 40 seconds.
Yes. There is great concern that Chatham not fall victim to development forces, which would deteriorate its uniqueness and turn it into Any Place USA. But the overriding concern is for Chatham to hold on to what it has and ward off changes which could undermine its character and beauty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else that would like to ask a question or speak against this application, either in the room or online? Yes, ma'am, please. You have to, you know the rules.
Hi, Sarah Marino. I am here to speak not in favor of this project. We do have pictures that are drastically different than the ones that were shown today if the board so chooses to see them. And that's what I would like to say.
Thank you. Again, is there anybody here with a question or wants to speak against or online? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Steve?
Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, you would like rebuttal. I apologize. I always forget that.
That's all right.
I have you to remind me.
The, again, I'd like to see picture three, if that's, if you can find that. Okay, so this picture was taken by a drone. It wasn't 50 feet in height. It was head height on the deck at the Marino House, which is directly across the street from our house, at about head height. And as you can see, the real view is on the south side of our house. The view over the roof is, you know, the roofs of other houses in Harwich and trees. And not only is that view not being impacted, the south end of the house is being brought into conformity with the setback and enlarging their view corridor by a foot and a half. So the, you know, there is an impact, but from our perspective, it actually improves their view. The, in terms of, they talk about the compatibility of the house with the other neighboring houses. There are 10 homes in the Standish condominium. There are three homes that have larger gross floor areas than our house. So I think that our house is compatible within the Standish condominium. And although the Marino Cottage, which is directly across the street, is quite small, the other Marino House is actually quite large, a big two-story house. I do have to say, I didn't understand what Mr. Marino was saying when he talked about shade and shadows because we're downhill from them, so I'm sort of mystified by that. But, so we think, we think the lot is adequate. We're only adding two-tenths of a percent or even less now that we've shortened the house. So is this change substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? Not to the Merinos, to the neighborhood. And since the Marino view is being retained, I think that you could easily find, and I hope you will, that these changes are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Questions from the board? Steve, as we started.
All right, just two simple ones, just to sort of verify. The only sideline setback, nonconforming, is the one that you mentioned in your application, is the one on the southern side. And all the other ones are in compliance with setbacks. Okay. And then in your picture, number three, I think you referred to, the pole that's behind what I think is a chimney.
Right.
Is that the extreme south gable of the house?
Of the new house, no. The extreme gable of the new house is going to be a foot and a half inside the lower roof.
Okay.
Yeah, right, yeah, more or less right there.
Okay.
So, again.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Mr. Riley or Chris, stormwater runoff, we talked about that last time. I think I heard you say you're adding a dry well to the driveway. That's new?
A catch basin, that's correct.
Okay.
Shown on the site plan. Can you put it out? There you go, right there.
A lot of lines there.
Yeah, a lot of lines.
Okay. And is that sufficient for, I mean, the street runs down, and it was brought up last time. So that's, you're putting in what is, you think is necessary size-wise, industrial or...
So, if I can answer that, there are two pieces to this. We were requested by Standish to put in one at the northwest and southwest corners. We cannot fit one at the southwest corner, but I think we'll still be able to get one at the northwest corner. So there's going to be a catch basin or cistern of some sort down there to catch water as well. So I sized the one in here to make sure that there was something, which is still better than what's there currently. We are not changing the amount of water that's flowing onto this property. Matter of fact, that's going to continue to flow. We're just redirecting it so it doesn't flow down the hills by, you know, pitching the house away, you know, away from it towards the east. So this will be better, even if we don't get the one at the northwest corner. This will be far superior to what currently exists.
Okay, and then knowing that the water runoff is, was an issue at the hearing, and it probably has been, in your new design, can you talk a little bit about any extra attention to gutter detail or anything additional that you're doing there?
We would, you know, we would put gutters that would bring the water down and into the catch basin so that it could percolate, you know, any water could percolate down into the, into the ground more slowly. The other piece being, of course, the treatment of the driveway itself could be... The other piece being, of course, the treatment of the driveway itself could be tremendous just because we can, we have the opportunity to put layers of gravel in there which could also contain the, the water. So, you know, what happens off the roof is one piece of it. But again, there's no more water. In fact, there's less because we're reducing, well, not, not quite less, but be very similar to what currently exists. So what exists, we will maintain. We will certainly put gutters to, to manage it.
But the biggest improvement is it doesn't have a driveway today in the front of the house.
True.
You're adding that.
Yeah.
You're dropping it down and then it's going to be impervious, I'm sorry, pervious structure.
Yes.
So that's a pretty big improvement to a concern, right, around water runoff. Okay. I, I had a question.
And the parking spaces, by the way, help to meet our bylaws, which currently, the house doesn't meet the bylaws, not even close. And the parking space that currently exists sits on an easement. So it shouldn't even be there. So it's, it's improving it in multiple ways.
Okay. Mr. Riley, thank you, Chris. Can, talk about the trees for a second. You, you mentioned in your narrative that the Marinos had spoken to Mrs. Waters about trees on that southern side and they were taken down. But did I hear you say those trees are not on the Waters' property? So you were able to get it from the other neighbor?
That's correct. So Cynthia contacted the neighbor-
Okay.
-next door and asked for permission to remove the trees. It was granted.
Yeah.
So the trees were cut down and then the stumps were subsequently removed as well. So at some cost to Ms. Waters. Unfortunately, you know, it didn't do anything to markedly improve the view, and so that's why the Marinos are still here.
Okay. Can I ask the, Mr. Marino, a question about the trees?
Which one?
I, um-
Because I spoke with you.
Okay, yeah.
You, you can't talk until you get up there.
Okay. How about now?
Yeah, now you're up there.
Go ahead.
So the trees that were cut down didn't really improve the view from your first house, your more southern house?
No, actually, no, they did not.
But you had asked to talk-
No, I did not. The history of that was, the applicant came out and informed me of the proposed project. Great. And I said, you know, we both agreed that those trees, some were dead close to the house, some of those would be great if they were taken down. And I, I said, that'd be nice if the whole thing was taken out as a big tunnel because, you know, then we'd have a better view. But I never agreed to pay for, never requested, never said, if you go ahead and pay for that, I'm going to bless your project. Never. It was-
Okay, but-
Non-committal.
But the trees, I mean, I can see the diameter of the trees and we saw the cut, the cut stumps when we went to the site. They're pretty substantial trees. I don't know what type of tree it was, but it didn't, that didn't help the view of your house from the, or actually-
No, because the pictures are taken in the wintertime with no foliage on it.
No, but taking out those trees-
There was some, obviously, there was some improvement because there were fewer trees.
Okay.
But not to the point where it's like, oh, that's markedly better.
Okay. All right. Question for you about the tree that's on your property that was shown in the drone footage-
Yes.
-that Mr. Riley showed?
Yes.
I, it was somewhere behind your property.
This one?
No, the, the one where it's behind your property and it was showing a tree in the middle that was pretty substantially blocking a view of the sound.
Let's see. Which one?
That one, yep.
Yeah, that's in between our two houses.
So those are your two houses?
Yes.
And then, so I, I know that the drone is not on the deck of the house behind it, presumably, but it is an image of your neighbor's view behind your houses. And that's your tree?
Yes, it is.
Has anyone ever asked you in your neighborhood to take that tree out?
No, actually, we just took out-
We got to stick to criteria in the questions if we could.
Well, okay, I wasn't sure if that was a fair question, but I-
No. We had a lot of trees, but, and, and we've taken a ton. Not a lover of trees near the house.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's, that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. Questions, Paul?
Mr. Riley, just, you go back to your photograph number three again. I had a question on that. The ridge height of the new house is going to be how high in relationship to that one?
It's a-
In relationship to which?
Yeah.
What we see now in the photograph.
It's nine feet.
It's nine, nine foot two roughly above the existing. The existing was elevation 17.5, I think.
So, so it'll be about nine feet higher than what is there now?
That's what, it's up to see, but there, we do have a, a piece of rope with little pink things tied to it to mark the height. See that?
Oh, that's all.
But again, from, from the deck on the Marino's house, there's no view over, you know, the ridge of our house.
I see. And, and on the left-hand side there, the view improvement that you're talking about is about a foot and a half?
Yes.
It's, that's going in and that, does that go to that window?
I don't think it goes that far.
No, it's a foot and a half. You can see a, a sort of a white line to the right of the cornerboard.
Yeah.
And it's around there.
I see.
Yes, exactly. It's right around there. The ridge would, would be at the, the height nine foot two above the, the main ridge currently, all the way across.
And you know what time-
Incidentally, if I may say, that that, the, the ridge, that height, is about the same height of the ridge at the house across the street.
The Marino.
Marino's house. And as you look out the Marino's window at the first floor, you would be looking about into the second floor. Their second, their first floor is about nine inches above where our second floor is proposed.
And do you know what time of day this photograph was taken?
Yeah, I do. It was, it was taken in the morning yesterday.
All right. And in terms of shading, it looks to me as if the, the whole yard here in front of the Marinos is shaded.
Yeah, because it, it was in the morning, so yes.
And what's happening is that the sun is then going to go towards Red River Beach from there, right?
Right.
So presumably, the shading that they're talking about that might affect their deck would be coming from the higher ridge level of your new house?
Well, the, in the first place, it would have to be at the, I, I'm not certain that it would, but it would only happen if it's at the extreme end of the day, when the sun is at its lowest point, so that it would extend. Because, because the house is 30 feet back from the street.
Mm-hmm.
And the street is 24, 25 feet wide. The Marino's house is set back another 10 or 15 feet. So we're talking about, as, well, as the young Mr. Marino said, 60 feet. So, I mean, at some point, the shade might actually, you know, reach their building, but it would only be at the extreme end of the day. I mean, it's just-
Okay. I have, I have no other questions.
David Nixon, questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm disappointed you weren't able to do a 3D presentation, and I understand the reason why, but there's still a lot of confusion from the folks across the street and yourselves. If we can, and we're fortunate because today we have the attorneys from both sides of the Kenner, Town of Chatham, Hibe scenario, and maybe I should ask Mr. Ford more than you because I believe he represented the Kenners.
Right.
How many houses did the Kenners assume were affected by the Hibe building? Was it one, two, three?
The-
My memory, it just helped me because I don't remember.
Yeah, well, the Kenner house was directly across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And the first floor of the Kenner house was the same elevation as the proposed ridge on the Hibe house. The Wardells, who had the next house over, also objected, but their view was not over the Hibe house. So I believe it was just Kenner.
So it was just one, not two?
That's correct, as far as I know.
Well, I, I don't know. For some reason, I thought there was two involved. Mr. Ford, can you help us out?
One house.
Yeah, and so similarly, the Marino cottage is the only house that's affected here. The, the, the second Marino house, the one further north, could you show that picture, Sarah, please? It has no view because the, there are trees planted, existing trees, on the north side of, of the Waters' property that completely block the view over the top of the Waters' property. Yeah. So this is the view, so the, the Marino house to the north, whatever the number is there, 37 or whatever, this is the view. So, so the drone was at head height on, on the deck of that property, and this is the view. So we believe it's just a single house here as well.
Okay, last question. Going back to the Kenner Hibe, Town of Chatham, what was the increase in the ridge on the Hibe house?
It was either nine or 10 feet. If you remember that case, and there's no reason why you should, the Hibe house was basically in the water, in, in, you know, in the marsh. And so what we did was, they basically doubled the height of the house so that the first floor was now level with the street, and then it was the second floor above it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ed Acton, questions?
Just one question to confirm. So the ridge height, the original plan, the last time you were in, you, you've reduced the ridge height by about two feet?
Two feet.
Two feet. Thank you.
David Veach, questions?
No, actually, I, Chris answered. I just wanted to confirm because I had done the math to get the, that height difference from the existing ridge to the new proposed bridge, which, as Chris says, like nine feet two inches roughly. That's how far those two-by-fours stick out.
Yeah.
I have no other questions.
So, so I just want to just reiterate. So your argument re- about Kenner is that it can't just be one house, it has to be the whole neighborhood. That was the holding in that case, correct?
Correct.
Right, okay. And you, and in this case, you think with regard to the view, it's only one house, or only one that we're hearing about, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And basically, remember the house behind that the young Mr. Marino talked about, there's a six-foot stockade fence, so there's no view from the first floor.
Yeah.
Only from the second floor, and that's blocked by the tree on the Marino property.
Yeah, okay, great, great. Good to know. So Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I've owned yes.
All votes yes.
Jenny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Now we'll start with Dave Veach.
Well, I, 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 I hear the, you know, the objections of the Marinos, but I, I don't think they really apply in this case. I think that, you know, by, by my rating of our criteria, that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it meets our criteria. And I, and I would also, I don't often agree with Mr. Riley, but I find that it's always true, there's no, no shading represented from this increase in roof, except perhaps at the very end of the day and, on, in the summer. And, and, you know, it's not, there's not, and shade is not likely to reach that Marino cottage under any circumstances other than that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Paul, your thoughts?
Well, I, I do walk this area quite frequently and I'm familiar with it. I understand the concerns that the Marinos have expressed, but I do think that when you look at the standards that we need to apply with respect to the entire neighborhood, and when you look at the concessions that have been made by the applicant, it seems to me that the timeframe when, when the shading is going to affect this area to the extent that it does, it's really, it's going to be late in the day when, to a certain extent, you're looking directly into the sun and it becomes a bit of a problem. But it, it seems to me that overall, this is clearly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood as a general proposition.
Thank you. Mr. Nixon, deliberations?
Well, it's, it's similar to the Kenner Hibe scenario. And I'm glad Mr. Ford was here to confirm that there was one house involved. And from the presentation by the Marino family, I get the impression that there's one house involved as far as the effect of the higher ridge. So that, looking at our criteria, I do not believe that this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, while it might be substantially more detrimental to the one house that the Marinos highlighted. And as such, I will be voting in the affirmative.
And Ed Acton, deliberations?
Yeah, I appreciate the Marino's argument, but I, I also believe that the applicant has made, you know, significant changes to the application, reduced the ridge height, shortened that, that, that southerly side of the house by a foot and a half, and I believe it, it does now meet our criteria.
Thank you. Jenny?
I also appreciate the argument that the Marinos made, and I empathize with you. However, the Kenner legal case is what has been discussed. I think it is applicable. And I agree with, with Ed and my colleagues that I, I think impactful changes were presented. There was a lot of discussion at the last hearing, and the summary that Mr. Riley put together, the previous and the current, show lowered height of almost two feet, reduced gross floor area impacting the cellar, the first floor, the second floor, dropped the driveway, and I think most importantly was that stormwater runoff. And the changes to the house are going to help with that and that end of the street where the Marinos are. So I know that doesn't compensate for a view, but I, I can't see that it's more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, so I would support it.
And Steve, if you were voting?
Well, you know, I appreciate the, the concessions that were made to, to the height and, and the setback that you corrected. I think that the new design is, is much improved. I like what you've done with the, the southern gable there to kind of clean it up and, and remove some of the mass that was in the original presentation. You know, I, I, I think this is a good project and I, you know, I feel for the neighbors, but, you know, it's one house in the whole neighborhood that, that might be affected, so I think I would support it.
And I just think the neighbors should take some solace in the fact that it's a better project now because of you. If you hadn't come last time, chances are we could have approved it last time. And now you have a little bit of a smaller house, you have better environmental factors with this house, so I think you, you should be commended for coming, and we appreciate that. Is there any thing you want to say about construction time and all that, conditions?
Well, I think it would be the standard because it's a crowded neighborhood, so it would be no exterior construction after the 4th of July or before Labor Day, no work after 5 o'clock or before 8 o'clock.
Or on weekends? Or on weekends?
Or on weekends.
Okay, very good. Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted with the condition that, uh, all construction activity and vehicles should be contained onsite or at neighboring property with the permission of the property owner. And between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction would be allowed. No work shall be permitted on the weekends and construction activity between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM only.
David Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous, thank you very much. Thank you for, thank you for your time. Okay. Ms. Abbey is next. 25-006 Michael D. Ford Esquire. Um, 103 Absegami Run.
Welcome. Application number 25-006, Missy Abbey LLC, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, P.O. Box 485 West Harwich, Mass. 02671. Owner of property located at 103 Absegami Run, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map 12E, Block 23G, Lot A15. The applicant seeks to modify variance number 24-042, granted on May 9th, 2024, which allowed for the construction of a swimming pool 25.5 feet from the road. The applicant now seeks to modify this variance to allow for the constructed pool to be located 25.2 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The property contains 21,928 square feet within the R40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 8D2C of the protective bylaw.
And welcome, Attorney Ford. Welcome, um, David Oppenheimer.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Appeals. So we're here, as, as indicated in the ad, to modify a, uh, a variance decision which this board, uh, granted for the installation of a pool at 103. And you may recall, you found unique conditions relating to the shape of the lot, the celestial shape, as we talked about it last time, such that, um, a large portion of this lot was unable to be built upon because the frontage requirement, um, ran parallel to the curvature of Absegami Run. And as a result, you found that, uh, that shape was a unique condition, and one which, if you applied the bylaw literally and required, um, a 40-foot setback for the pool, created a hardship. So, um, this case is all about the two plans that you have in, in your materials. First, the plan that accompanied the variance that shows the setback that was approved by the board, 25.5 feet, 25 and a half feet, um, off of Absegami at its closest point. And the plan that's before you, which is the existing conditions plan, uh, which shows it at its closest point of 25.2 feet. So, um, it's approximately, at that one point, um, it's approximately, um, uh, 3.6 inches closer to the roadway than it was authorized by the variance. And the area of the pool that is, um, 3.6 feet closer is .22 of a square foot. So, um, as Mr. Oppenheimer said, it's the size of that phone that's, that's 2.22 square feet. So, um, it doesn't comply, however, with your decision or with the plan, and that's why we're back here. We'd suggest respectfully that it's de minimis. It certainly was not an intentional, uh, mistake. Uh, but it is one for which, uh, we've discussed with the building commissioner, and he believes that, and I think correctly so, that we have to come back to this board to get relief. I'd suggest to you that if you're, uh, willing to grant this, um, that the same variance conditions that you relied on to grant the, uh, variance in the first place all apply, um, in this case as well. And I'm happy to go through those variance conditions I, I included them.
I don't think you need to.
Okay. So, uh, I, I think with that, we'll, we'll take questions.
Okay, are there any? Anybody, questions? Nope, no questions. Paul, oh wait a minute, Virginia, did you have a question?
I did just have a question. What would be, um, yeah, I got it. What would be an alternative to correcting it?
We can't, because you'd have to remove, basically, you'd have to take all the water out of the pool, you'd have to put a triangle the size that you've seen. You saw that little piece of wood, and we'd have to redo the entire, um, patio around it, which is all granite, and to make it square. We didn't, the pool is no bigger than it was supposed to be. Um, I can't honestly tell you how this happened. Um, I, my best guess is, I, I think it's my fault, quite frankly, in a sense, if this is even what happened. The grinder pump, uh, pipe is at the north end, and it was, you know, it's flexible, it was backfilled, and it was basically where it was, but it might have moved slightly. And we didn't want any concrete on the grinder pump, so I'm guessing, I don't know this is what happened, that they may have slid it slightly towards the south, towards Baggett's property, which was not subject to the variance, and not realizing that the road came in another couple of inches on that side.
The road curves in, so if you move it down.
So we didn't make the pool any bigger. And then, and in my own head, and this is my, I've been in front of this board many times, and I've always leave myself flex. And so I, I guess in my head I was dealing with 25 feet, which was what we, the sideline setback. I had Ryder and Wilcox make it 25.6, so we would have room. It was staked properly. Um, could we have done more? I'm not throwing anybody on the bus, it's on me. It's the first time I've ever been here in 50 years, for forgiveness.
It's fine. Okay, um, I forgot to go through the actual, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will read the one correspondence from a health agent, Judith Giorgio, April 8th, 2025. She tells us she has no concerns regarding the modification of this variance. Thank you, Judith Giorgio. Um, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams who wishes to speak against this application? If so, please raise your hand. Seeing none. Now we'll go back to questions. Sorry about that. Steve? Oh, no, does anyone have any questions? We, we didn't seem to have any more. Very good. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, now we'll do deliberations. Uh, Ed?
Um, it, it, it's a very small, small, uh, change, and, uh, you know, sometimes in the real world and, and in construction, mistakes are made, and this is a, a very small mistake, in, in, in my opinion.
And, let's see, Steve?
I don't think this is going to have an adverse effect on anyone. Uh, it's a slight mistake, not a big deal.
Ginny?
Well, that's why I asked Mr. Oppenheimer what, uh, you know, what the correction was. We all know, like, a lift and shift is not, is not a tenable solution here. Um, the, the correction would be at an extreme cost, the disruption of the neighbors, the terrain, the property. It's such a small item, um, that I think that, uh, we are sometimes the board of construction for forgiveness.
All right, and Paul, your thoughts?
Yes, I, uh, I, I agree. I did not vote in favor of this application when it came through before, but it's been approved by the board, and the applicant has been operating with good faith. And frankly, the place looks gorgeous. Uh, so, uh, I, I see no reason to, uh, say that this would be substantially more detrimental in any way.
Right, and let's see, who, David Veach?
I agree with my colleagues.
Yeah, very good. And Mr. Nixon, your thoughts?
Well, my only, uh, negative thought is that this business about de minimis, uh, I know we have the ability to pronounce that something is de minimis, but there's no definition of it. Is, is de minimis an eighth of an inch? Is it a foot? Is it 100 yards? I mean, it could be anything you want. And opening that door, I think is a huge mistake. However, in this scenario, and this goes back to the reason I voted for the variance to begin with, which was, if you ever recall, uh, the property was being penalized with essentially having two fronts. And that's, that's what pushed me into thinking, okay, then the variance is okay. So I whittle down to, do I think that I could change the variance? No, we voted for it, and I voted for it, and this, I'm not going to say the word, this small error. We'll call it, can I call it a small error? Yeah, there is right or wrong, you know, and I, I think Jay and I have had this question, there's right or there's wrong. Well, this is wrong, but I still would vote for it.
Yeah, and I was going to use the word de minimis now.
No.
But I won't, I, I will just say it's minimal. And, uh, I appreciate that you even hear on it. Somehow, I'm surprised it was even caught. So, with that, let's take a vote.
I will move to approve the, uh, application as submitted with the conditions that no driveway access shall be permitted from the southwest corner of the premises, fronting on Absegami Run to a point on Absegami Run, 10 feet offset from the northerly end of the existing stockade fence, a distance of approximately 70 feet along Absegami Run, and two, a row of plantings consisting of shrubs and trees at least the height of the existing stockade fence shall be planted and maintained in the approximate 10-foot buffer between Absegami Run and the sto- existing stockade fence. I believe that's all that we need for conditions at this time.
David Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. It's unanimous, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Now we're going to go Old, Old Male Road for a similar application. Uh, 25-011 Matthew Gavin, Allison Gavin, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire. And Sarah will read the application.
Application number 25-011, Matthew J. Gavin and Allison S. Gavin, care of William G. Litchfield Esquire, 330 Orleans Road, North Chatham, Mass. 02650. Owners of property located at 80 Old Male Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map 14I, Block 27, Lot AC7. The applicant seeks a dimensional variance from the required setback for a deck that was constructed 23.97 feet from the easterly of Butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The property contains 10,000 square feet within the R40 zoning district. A dimensional variance is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10 and Section 8D2C of the protective bylaw.
Welcome, Attorney Litchfield. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Bill Litchfield here on behalf of Matt and Allison Gavin, who couldn't be here today, but they're builder. Sean T. Bear is here with me. Uh, the chair correctly noted that this is unusual and that we have, uh, two variance hearings in a row, both related to small mistakes. Uh, I'd like to say that we have a further commonality and blame this on Mr. Oppenheimer, but I guess that wouldn't, that wouldn't work. He did take the blame for the last one, so I thought I could follow suit. But, uh, I'll try to be brief because you already had a long hearing. The Gavin family, as you may recall from the hearing a year ago, has owned this property for more than a quarter of a century. And last year, they came before you for a special permit to construct some additions that make the house more comfortable and more accommodating for their four children. That included expanding the deck on the east side of the house, which was built, uh, which was to be built in accordance with plans showing it 25.03 feet from the easterly lot line, a line which, as you know from your site visit, drops down quite dramatically downhill. Simply put, a mistake was made. Uh, there were apparently two sets of plans prepared by the house designer, and our builder, Sean, inadvertently used the wrong one, which resulted in the deck being 23.97 feet, which is essentially 24 feet from the lot line rather than 25. Those two plans are the second and third sheets of the handout that you have. The print is small, but I've annotated it. Uh, one shows the deck extending 18.6 feet from the fireplace. The other shows it extending 19.6 feet from the fireplace. And unfortunately, the latter was used for construction, so what is shown there is the result, what Sarah has brought up. We are 23.97, 24 feet at the northeast corner, and 24.16 at the southeast corner, where 25 feet was supposed to be the case. The work was completed, and the discrepancy of one foot was noted when the as-built was, was prepared. Sean came to see me in February, and I explained that variances are infrequently granted. But having seen the deck on my daily walk, uh, knowing the reasonable nature of this board, and having learned more about the circumstances, I told him that a very, uh, small amount of relief might be authorized by this board. As we know, and as you know, a variance requires all of three things, finding that owing to circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, or topography of the land or structures, but not found generally in the zoning district, that a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw involves a hardship and the desirable relief can be granted without doing substantial derogation of the purpose and intent of the bylaw. A little history, and I'll try to be brief, may be helpful because I think most of you know it. From the time our zoning bylaw was enacted in 1954 until the Dedrick case, uh, about 10 years ago, this one-foot extension into the setback could have been allowed by special permit. Uh, that's because the lot and the existing house are both non-conforming, we're less than 20 feet from the road where 40 feet is required. We've got a shed, which is literally on the lot line. We're too close on the west side, and the lot itself is 10,000 square feet. That was how we operated until the Dedrick case was decided, which showed its somewhat questionable understanding of Chatham zoning because it also suggested that the goal of zoning was elimination of all non-conformities, which essentially says we're going to level the old village. I don't think that, I don't think that's appropriate. But the result of Dedrick is that this is the only way to validate this minor deviation through a variance. All of the lots on Old Male Road and this part of Old Male Road were created a long before we had zoning. And every time town meeting was asked and did vote to upgrade zoning, the voters were assured that relief for changes to existing properties would be available from this board. Unfortunately, Dedrick, Dedrick decided 30 years after the zoning change in this part of North Chatham, made those assurances false. It's the law, though, and we have to live with it. As I said, a mistake was made, or rather, there were two. Uh, first, the designer created two sets of plans, one showing an extension a foot wider than the other, and those were the plans that Sean used. The homeowner is the applicant here. He didn't do it, or they didn't do it. Matt and Allison didn't do it. The hardship is decidedly not self-created. A self-created hardship is when a buildable tract is divided into several lots, leaving an undevelopable or undersized lot, or one with insufficient frontage. A variance is requested to validate that, and that isn't appropriate. This is instead closer, I think, to the case on Cove Hill Circle a couple of years ago, where a builder inadvertently exceeded the house limit. The relief was granted to the homeowner, notwithstanding of the builder's work for the homeowner. You properly granted a variance in that case, allowing the homeowner the use of the house without further delay of difficult, or difficulty, and found no derogation from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. The neighbors there weren't opposed, nor are they here. And in fact, the chair will read letters resulting from Sean's having knocked on their doors, having visited with them and explaining how the mistake was made. The letters uniformly see this one-foot deviation as inconsequential and without detriment to the neighborhood or the public good. There are other arguments that could be made. There are in-ground steps on the right. Those are outside, or those are within the setback area under our bylaws definition, uh, of structure, which is any combination of materials are assembled or maintained at a location on or in the ground or attached to something located on the ground. I could make the argument that we could get this by a special permit because we're already too close to that lot line. But there's no point in doing that, frankly. Uh, the grant of this innocuous variance is, I think, the sensible and preferable alternative. So I'll go into the three criteria. One, that there are circumstances relating to the topography of the land or structures. First, the sloping topography is by no means found throughout the R40 district and makes the sideline setback an inherent vegetative strip. You should see it when the, when the trees leaf out. It's, it's dense back there. But in fact, you won't see this deck the way you see it right now in the winter. Beyond that, unlike, uh, almost every other house on the south side of Old Male Road, the existing structure or house currently met, uh, the easterly, but not the westerly sideline setback. And most importantly, the structure itself is not a house. It's not a shed, it's not a tennis court. It is a low-to-the-ground deck. The structure by its shape is essentially... structure by its shape is essentially without mass. Second, the literal enforcement would cause hardship. As you know, the cases say that a far lesser hardship is required, lesser showing of hardship is required for a dimensional variance. It's a discretionary matter for the zoning Board of Appeals. The hardship here has numerous aspects. Financial, for Sean, who doesn't have insurance, we asked him about that. He has workers' comp, but he doesn't have liability insurance. He'll also have to redo the footings. That will delay the process. Moreover, the color of the deck materials is a special order. It will take a significant amount of time to obtain, and Sean is essentially a one-man construction company. He has other commitments, and if he comes back to do this, as he will, for the homeowner, it's gonna delay other homeowners who are expecting him. It will also cause further disruption of noise, disruption and noise for the neighborhood. There's a case called D. G. Avani versus Rockport Zoning Board of Appeals, and the appeals court, not the ZBA, the appeals court noted in that case that when it's a matter of inches, which is involved, what's involved here, could be readily the basis for a variance. There is no single aspect of hardship here that is necessarily severe, but taken together, the hardship for the applicants will be impactful and certainly more significant than the truly small, not de minimis, relief that we're, we're seeking here. And finally, that the desirable relief may be granted without doing harm to the bylaw. The neighborhood was built under the old, well, some of the houses were built before zoning. This house was built with the old R ten setbacks of fifteen feet from the abutters, and again, the voters were told that they wouldn't lose any rights. Then came Dedrick, but the relief that we're seeking is consistent with, with what the voters were promised. It has no negatives to the neighborhood and is very, very minor. Thus, I think you can find it to be without detriment to the public good, or quote, as our bylaw says, "Those qualities which distinguish Chatham as a desirable community, including quality of life, preservation of value of land and buildings, and prevention of overcrowding and blight." You've been out there. The deck is not a blight on the neighborhood. It's essentially innocuous. Jay can't ignore it. That's not his job, but you can grant the relief that we are seeking today. I won't send Mr. Semple back to high school by again quoting Shakespeare on the qualities of mercy, but the, the same point remains. There are nonetheless sufficient legal bases for this request. There's also a degree of please assist us in this regard, because we know there's never a right to a variance. On the other hand, however, I am reminded of what a late member of this board said about a variance request several years ago. I'll call it the Hessler theorem. In a case far more difficult than this one, I'll paraphrase Bob's simple summary, we look silly if we didn't grant it. I've mentioned to you from my fondness for a legal scholar named Carl Llewellyn, who argued that formalism or mechanical application of rules without considering outcome, circumstances, and realities didn't serve the law or the public good. And he has said something that applies here, which you've heard me quote before, "The rule follows where its reason leads. Where stops the reason, there stops the rule." Here, there's no reason not to allow this deck to remain where it is. It was a mistake, but a harmless one, I think you can find. The affected abutter is completely unconcerned, and one of the letters the Chair will read from an immediate abutter makes a succinct point. She said, quote, "I think the hullabaloo over the overage is sad." May not be legal terms, but I think it sums up the matter quite well. It shouldn't have happened, but it did. By the same token, there's no good purpose in removing that deck. The minimal variance involved a matter of inches avoids significant expense and delay in the homeowner's use of their house, prevents more disruption to the neighborhood. And I think that you can find that owing to circumstances relating to the topography and the nature of the structure involved, which are circumstances which aren't found throughout the R forty zone, that a literal enforcement of the dimensional regulations of the bylaw would involve hardship, admittedly not insurmountable, but comparable to the minimal deviation involved, and the desirable relief may be granted without any detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I'm going to read, first I'm gonna read Judith Giorgio's, and then I wanna make a deal with you about the other ones. Giorgio writes on April eighth that she, let's see, has no comments or concerns about the sideline variance for the proposed deck. Then we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight neighbors in favor.
Madam Chair, I, anticipating your request, we would waive the reading of the letters under the assumption that we would all like to go home based on a positive vote on this request.
Well, I can't make that kind of a deal, but I, I will say that I will name the people that wrote and that they were all in favor. Barry and Violet Dissolets, forty-one Old Male Road, Ann Roskey, also thirty-six Old Male Road, forty-two Old Male Road from Mary Bowers, and Matthew Gavin, Ellen Forsyth from fifty-three Old Male Road, and Debbie and Randy Harwood from, let's see, they live on eighty Old Male Road, and then Sean, no, hi Sean, it's Joyce, this must be something different, seventy Old Male Road. Let's just say that they're in favor, just for the fun of it, and Richard Hall, Kathleen Edwards from eighty Old Male Road, Peter and Mary, Ellen Marsden of twenty-six. These people all voted, they all want us to vote in favor, every one of them, and so we appreciate that. So anybody that doesn't want us to vote in favor? Anybody here against this application or has a specific question? Are on Microsoft Teams? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Are there any? No? Okay, Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, now we're gonna do deliberations. We'll start with Steve, if you were voting.
Well, I don't see a problem with this. I think the hardship would be in disassembling that deck and reconstructing it. So it's a mistake. It's still more than twenty feet away from the property line. I don't have an issue with this.
Very good. Ginny, do you?
I agree with Steve's comments. I, yeah, one, one foot is, is small, and I think that the, similar to the one we heard, it's, the disruption to try to change it would be the hardship, and I think you've made the case for meeting all three of the requirements for the hardship, so I would support it.
And Paul?
Yes, I agree that it's not a blight on the neighborhood. There may be other blights on that road of different type, but not this particular one. And I like the idea that it's a structure without mass. That's a concept that I hadn't thought of before. So I think it clearly meets our criteria, and I will vote in favor of it.
All right, and David Veitch, what say you?
I, I agree with my colleagues, and to echo, I'm not sure if I have the term correctly, but we occasionally are the construction, what was it, Ginny? Construction.
Board of Forgiveness.
Board of Forgiveness for construction errors, or something along those lines. And I, this is definitely one of those cases, and I agree. Thanks.
And Ed?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. It's certainly not a blight, and it's a, a small, small mistake. The one question I have is, you're creating a non-conformity now.
We actually closed the public hearing, so you can't really do that unless we all vote to open it back up.
No? Okay. Maybe you could educate me on that at some point. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Nixon?
Well, I'm gonna vote no. This is a good example of what happens when individuals hire builders, architects, whatever it might be, and don't ask for certificates of insurance showing in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. You would never want to hire anybody that couldn't give you a certificate of insurance showing they had workers' compensation insurance because that would be illegal in Massachusetts. You do not have to carry it on yourself, but if you were going to hire somebody else to do anything, you do. And then the prudent person would make sure that the individual you hired had professional liability, usually called E and O, errors and omissions insurance, because that is where this should be adjudicated. It should have been a claim by the homeowner against the, and I don't even know if, in this case, it's the builder who's responsible or whoever gave him the plan. I don't know that yet. But that's where this should be handled, not here, not in the Board of Forgiveness. You know, we're just doing this too much. We have to draw a line, you know? Do you have insurance? No? Then why did you hire this person? It just doesn't make sense to me. So I'm voting no.
Okay, and I'm not gonna use the word de minimis, because I actually wouldn't think this is de minimis. I don't, but I think you, you know, you've given an adequate argument, and I think the prudent thing to do is to vote in favor, in my opinion. So Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
David Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote no.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I, so for the.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Good to see you. All right, now we're gonna go to one oh eight Beach Plum Road, Paul Detwiler, care of James Norcross Esquire. And this is also a modification.
Application number twenty-five dash twelve, R. Paul Detwiler, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, Peel Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owner of property located at one oh eight Beach Plum Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map four D, block sixteen, lot twenty-three. The applicant seeks to modify a special permit number twenty-four dash zero four three, granted on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, which allowed for the demolition of the two existing dwellings and the construction of two new dwellings. The applicant now seeks to modify this special permit to allow for one of the dwellings, the cottage, to be located twenty feet from the Coastal Conservancy District, where twenty-three feet was approved and fifty foot, and a fifty-foot setback is required. The lot contains twenty-one thousand six hundred square feet of buildable upland area and ninety-four thousand square feet of land area in an R twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, Section six and fourteen, and Sections five B and eight D two B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Attorney Norcross, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Jamie Norcross, representing Paul Detwiler. Paul is here in the audience today. As you heard, this is a request to amend the special permit that was granted by the board last May. Key difference from the prior two applications is we haven't started the work yet, so this is coming in before the fact. And so what happened is, this was a proposal to tear down and rebuild two structures on the property, and in conjunction with the rear structure, it was gonna require a pretty significant retaining wall, and when Paul got the specs for the retaining wall, it was gonna require the removal of a number of mature trees in that area, and Paul would rather keep the trees. And so the change is to shift the structure over eight feet to the east. The setback to the Coastal Conservancy District is only changing by three feet, however, because the deck is being shrunk in terms of the width. So that's the sole extent of the change. The footprint of the structure, other than the deck, is remaining entirely the same. Dave Clark presented this before the Conservation Commission, and they indicated they would approve the proposal as amended at their next meeting. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate. Seeing none, I will read the three correspondents that we've received, and first one is from Judith Giorgio, our health agent on April eighth. She tells us she has no concerns. And then we have a note from the Conservation Commission, and they will provide conditions to allow this to meet the performance standards, and that was received on March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Christina Bassett from the C H C tells us that they found this property not to be historically significant and did not impose a demolition delay, and that was received on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. That concludes the correspondences. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wishes to speak against this application or has a specific question? Also seeing none. Are there questions from the board? Seeing none. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, now we'll do deliberations. We'll start with David.
Totally support this, to save trees, absolutely.
Yeah, very good. Mr. Acton?
I agree as well. If, if it's gonna, when I was out there, it looked like there were a bunch of mature trees in that area, so I can understand why I'd like to keep them.
Mr. Nixon?
Yes, I have no problem with this. It seems to me it's a reasonable request.
All right, and Paul?
Certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I, I agree.
And Steve?
Yeah, as long as the Conservation Commission is okay with it, and I think it's a good idea to save the trees, so I think it's a good idea.
Yes, and Ginny?
I agree with my colleagues.
And I would be the biggest tree hugger probably of the group, and so, yes, very good. Paul?
I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I believe we, we put conditions on it last time, so I have a condition that, that all construction activity and vehicles contained on site or to neighboring property with permission of the property owner, that between June thirtieth and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on the weekends, and construction activity between eight AM and five PM only.
David Veitch seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Congratulations. It's unanimous. Last but not least, we have four eleven Main Street, also James M. Norcross Esquire, care of Joseph and Donna Bovee, twenty-five dash one three, four eleven Main Street. Sarah will read the application.
Application number twenty-five dash zero one three, Joseph and Donna Bovee, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, Peel Box seven oh seven, Chatham, Mass. zero two six three three. Owners of property located at four eleven Main Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessors Map fifteen D, block fifty-three, lot thirty-three. The applicant proposes to change, alter, or expand a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of an addition. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located six point eight feet from the easterly abutter where a fifteen-foot setback is required. The proposed addition will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered a substantial alteration, and under the second except clause of Section six of Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is one thousand three hundred and twelve square feet, twelve point one percent, and the proposed building coverage is one thousand five hundred and ninety-six square feet, fourteen point seven percent, where fifteen percent is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains zero feet of frontage and contains two dwellings. The lot contains ten thousand eight hundred and twenty-two square feet in the GB one slash R twenty zoning districts. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty A, Section six, and Section five B of the Protective Bylaw.
Welcome.
Thank you. Jamie Norcross, representing Joseph and Donna Bovee. With me this afternoon is Leslie Sneeburger, the architect for the project. I'm just gonna touch on a couple bits of overview and then turn it over to Leslie to run through the design for you, for the changes. Mr. and Mrs. Bovee purchased this property in twenty nineteen, and they're looking to create some additional living area in the home, as the goal is it's gonna become their full-time residence in the not-too-distant future. The proposal, as Leslie will explain, is to demolish a small section of the existing structure and build an addition on the west side of the home. In terms of non-conformities, the lot is non-conforming. It's ten thousand eight hundred square feet, where twenty thousand square feet is required, and it has, as Sarah mentioned, no frontage. It's kind of unique in that regard. It has an easement across the Gibson Sotheby's property out to Main Street. The existing structure is non-conforming as to the east setback at six point eight feet. The cottage is also non-conforming onto the, as to the west setback. The proposed project will not create any new non-conformities, as our addition will be on the west side of the property and will be well outside the fifteen percent, excuse me, the fifteen-foot setback, and our total building coverage, while increasing, is still gonna be below the fifteen percent maximum allowed. So with that as some background, I turn it over to Leslie to run through the design for you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Leslie Sneeburger, architect for Donna and Joseph. As Jamie let you know, this is a property that's existing non-conforming with a small L on the west side of it. So the way this has been set up, if you look at the, the drawings to the left, those are existing. Drawings to the right are the proposed. So as far as looking at the house from Main Street, the peak, you can get through the bushes, the little L that's coming off of the west side is to be removed. That's currently a half bath and some extra space, crawl space in the basement. And then that is the area that the addition's happening. It is the most buildable area. Also was the easiest and kind of and kind of most aesthetically appropriate for the home. So front door actually stays where it is, but now it has a little overhang porch on it. And then there's the second floor up above. So in the west elevation, that's where the majority of the change happens. The one-story addition is gone, and instead it's a two-story, although I would argue maybe one and a half-story addition on the west side. The crux of the project is because the homeowners are making this their primary home. It has currently three very, very small bedrooms on the second floor. And so the addition is now housing a new primary suite. It's still modest and not overwhelming, but it does allow for a comfortable-sized bedroom, a private bath, and a closet dressing area. That is, the closet dressing area is coming from one of the existing smaller bedrooms, so it's not changing the amount of bedrooms on the third, on the second floor. It's still three bedrooms. On the first floor, knowing that this is a home for a much longer period of time, as they've retired, we've created a den that can serve as a first-floor bedroom. The house was connected to sewer a few years ago, and there's some notes, and we've done some research onto that. So this is an auxiliary, a great workspace for right now and auxiliary should it be needed to serve as a bedroom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Just going through the criteria. Number one, adequacy of the size of the site. Applicant believes the size of the site is adequate for this proposal. As I mentioned, the addition will be located over 35 feet from the west lot line, well outside the 15-foot setback required. Building coverage is only increasing by 284 square feet and below the 15% maximum allowed. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. It's kind of a unique location for a neighborhood comparison because you have commercial structures in front of it on Main Street and then a residential neighborhood behind the property on Homestead Lane. However, even with the proposed addition, the size of the home is compatible with neighboring properties. If you look at the gross fuller area numbers, I think you can see that it demonstrates the compatibility in terms of size. A lot of these are smaller lots. And this home, again, while increasing its size, is still quite modest in the scheme of things. Extent of the proposed increase in nonconforming nature. There is no increase in the nonconforming nature. Our addition will meet the setback. Suitability of the site. We believe it's suitable for the project and the construction work without any negative impact on neighboring properties or the natural environment. Impact of scale, size, and mass suggests there's no negative impact on neighborhood visual character. It's setback quite a distance from Main Street and is largely unseen from the road. As it relates to the neighboring properties, the Bovees' property has extensive hedges around the perimeter that provide additional privacy and screening. Also, it sort of sits up a bit as it relates to the properties on Homestead, which I think actually minimizes any additional size because it's setback and it's kind of at the high point looking out over the rest of the neighborhood. It's a residential use in a residential neighborhood, therefore compatible. We have, as Leslie mentioned, it's connected to town sewer and it has town water. There'll be no negative impact on traffic flow and safety, and the rest are not applicable. So just quickly to summarize, again, we think it's a reasonable proposal, reasonable for the neighborhood, and certainly not substantially more detrimental. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wish to speak in favor of this application? If so, please make it known. Seeing none, I will read the two correspondences. One's from the HBDC and one's from our health agent. The HBDC tells us on February 19th, they had a meeting and they rendered the following decision. The commission voted 3-0 approving the demolition of the 20,003 addition of the mudroom and laundry room, demolish a partial opening of the exterior wall for a new addition, with the standing condition that any changes or alterations be approved by a certificate of appropriateness and require additional approval by the HBDC. And that was March 17, 2025. And then we have a note from our health agent that she wrote to us on 2/11/2025. The property is connected to Chatham Sewer and is approved for a total of four bedrooms, including the bedroom in the cottage on the property. The plan will add a fifth bedroom to the property and will require the approval of the sewer department for additional flow. Did you want to comment on that, or we good?
I can let you know that I have correspondence with the sewer department that it's feasible.
Yeah, oh, very good. Okay, is there anybody here on Microsoft Teams that wish to speak against this application or has a question? Seeing none, we'll do questions from the board. Paul, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
And Steve?
I have no questions.
Ginny? No questions.
David?
I'm puzzled, Jamie, that in 2006, it was sold for $1,451,000. In 2019, 13 years later, it was sold for $1,199,000. Why the $250,000 reduction over 13 years? It doesn't make any sense to me.
Good question. Although 2006 was a bit of a boom, and 2019 was before the COVID boom, so it could have been in that sweet spot there, I guess, if you were a buyer. Not anymore.
Maybe Leslie knows more about this.
This feels like a trick question.
I said, what is going on here? Well, apparently, I wasn't there in 2019 when the boat came in, because. Anyway, I just was curious. Thank you.
Any questions from you, Ed Acton?
No questions.
No questions from you either, David Veach? Okay, very good. Paul?
I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Dave Veach seconds and votes yes.
I vote yes.
All votes yes.
Ginny votes yes.
As do I. Okay, deliberations. Ginny?
I love the project. I think that, as Leslie mentioned, modest but very impactful, what they're proposing and what Leslie's drawn. I think it is so smart to add that fourth bedroom, which is the future bedroom downstairs. I think that's really a smart idea. Very attractive. It's what I would call great, you know, a great house getting greater, like better, even better, if that's possible. And so therefore, not substantially more detrimental.
Very good. Steve, what say you?
I think the same thing. I think it's a great project. I think this is going to look like it's been there all along, and I don't have any issues.
And Paul?
You go back there and you find this house, and you think, whoa, where did this come from? Very nice. And it looks great. Certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
And Mr. Nixon?